This is an official event of the congressional district that I'm honored to represent. I'm Al Green, your congressman, and this is the ninth congressional district, and this is an official congressional event. As such, there are some protocols that we try to adhere to. We have a little bit of a formality that we will go through initially, and then we'll get right to why you're here, and that is to hear from our very special guest. So if you would, at this time, join me. I am a person who believes in having an invocation. I won't say anything, but I will ask that those who would would have a moment of silence with me. And I try to, in these moments of silence, think about persons who are in harm's way. I consider our military persons who are willing to go to distant places, and many of them don't return the way they left. So I'm always concerned about them, and in moments of silence, I will think about them. I will think about persons who are among what I call the least, the last, and the lost, persons who were not born into plenty, they were born into poverty, persons who are the first to be fired because they were the last to be hired, persons who are living in the richest country in the world, yet they are living in poverty. So I tend to think about people who are in need when I have moments of silence. I cannot tell you what to do, but I would beg that you give some thought to people who are not as fortunate as we are when you have your moment of silence. And with that said, those who would like to can participate in this moment of silence with me. Thank you. I love my country, and as evidence of it, I quite often mention, as I have persons who serve in our military, and I'd like to acknowledge any persons who are here today. If you're part of our country's military, at official events, we make an effort to acknowledge you. So if you've served or you have served, would you kindly stand, please? Anyone associated with -- let's give them a hand, please.[149.19][149.19][applause] Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate you, and we want you to know that we roll out the red carpet for you whenever we can. We also, in an effort to demonstrate how much we love the country, we engage in song. I like the song "God Bless America." It just speaks to a lot of what our country is all about. And if you would like to, you can join me in singing "God Bless America." If you would like to stand, you may. I suppose you can be seated and still sing as well. I will be standing, obviously, and I invite those of you who would like to to stand with me and sing "God Bless America." I will lead, but do not sing in the key of Al, Dana.[193.62][193.62][laughter] Don Lind, please don't sing in the key of Al. Sing in the key of love, if you would. I think we will harmonize better if we should do so. With this said, [singing] God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the ocean wide with foam. God bless America, my home, sweet home. That's it. We won't take you any higher.[251.98][251.98][applause] All right. Thank you. Thank you. Give yourselves a hand.[256.98][256.98][laughter] As I said, this is an official town meeting, but I believe that we serve with the consent of the people that we serve. And to this end, I always start our meetings by asking your permission to serve as your presiding officer. So let's start first with someone giving us a motion to continue with this town meeting. Is there anybody who would like to make such a motion? All right, this is Shad Bogany. And Shad, we are honored that you're here, and we will accept that. Was there a second for the motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Properly moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposition nay? We shall proceed. As a presiding officer, I need your blessings. So we have now a motion to have me act as your presiding officer.
I'll do it.
All right. This is another great realtor here. The realtor's here in large force today. A second, please?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposition nay? All right. The motion carries. In this meeting, it's my opinion that we should have a certain amount of order. And to achieve order in terms of how we will present ourselves, it's my belief that when one person has had an opportunity to speak or ask a question, that that person should be given the opportunity to speak or ask a question at a later time, but not continually ask questions, so that we can get to everyone before we get back to the person who spoke initially. So to this end, can we agree that if you should ask a question, that if we are to hear from you again, we'll hear from everybody else first and then come back to a given person? So that way, we don't have one person repeatedly asking questions while other people are waiting to ask questions. If this is a methodology by which you would have us proceed, may I have a motion? Second, please. All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. So we will speak in the order that we've just given to you. When we have town meetings, we have found that there are persons who want to exercise their freedom of speech. As a person who is a former NAACP president, I have great value and great belief that freedom of speech is something that we should protect, something that we should cherish. So I value freedom of speech, and I think people ought to be able to express themselves. But I also think that we should have a town meeting and that we should have the opportunity to hear from all persons present, to the extent that we can, and that we should do so in an orderly fashion. So from time to time, we have people who will decide that they are going to speak longer than they should, and when this occurs, we would like to have a means by which we can let them know that their time is up. And what we will do is encourage people to make their comments, and I'll probably ask that they abridge comments, I'll ask if they bring it to closure. But at some point, if it does not come to closure, then I have found in the tradition of the civil rights movement that we -- I was a part of, many of you may have been a part of, we would always sing a song when persons were going exceedingly long. We would sing a song. In the civil rights movement, we would sing "We Shall Overcome." Great song for calming things. But today, we'll sing "God Bless America," and while we're singing "God Bless America," we have officers here who may find it necessary to visit with persons who have not found reason to bring their comments to closure. So if this is a means by which we should proceed -- excuse me, this may be the president. Let me just check. It's a private number. It may be the president. Hold on. Hello? Hello? Uh, no. This is not the president.[505.44][505.44][laughter] So we'll just let that call go, and this may be a good time to put your phones on vibrate. I'm putting my phone on vibrate. There's no -- you don't have to, friends. It's not required. I'm not a person who's annoyed by phones going off. As you can see, my phone went off. If I'm a person who's annoyed, then I'd be annoyed with myself. So you don't have to put your phones on vibrate, but if you'd like to, you may. As I was saying, if you are of the opinion that this is a good means by which we can have order and make sure that everybody is heard, to the extent that we believe is reasonable, may I have a motion to proceed in this fashion? Second? All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition nay? Okay. Now, I will lead the "God Bless America" if it becomes necessary. My belief is, we won't have to do it. We won't have to sing it again today. In this meeting, we have many persons, all of whom are important. Every person here today is important, and we want every person to be heard from. So we're going to beg that you will wait your turn, and what we will do is, at an appropriate time when we have our Q and A, we'll ask that you raise your hands. And when you raise your hand, we will assign each person a number so that you'll know where you are in the line of persons to ask questions. And you'll receive your number, and we'll proceed with the numbers that we have, and if we have more persons than we have numbers, then we'll hand out additional numbers after we've gone through the numbers that are available to us. But we've found that by doing it this way, we maintain a certain amount of order. If this is something that meets with your approval, someone give me a motion, please?
Open.
Second, please? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition nay? We'll proceed in this fashion. Now, having established these protocols, I am honored to tell you, friends, that today we have with us one of the preeminent personalities in our country when it comes to the rights of consumers. As you know, Congress and the Dodd-Frank Act passed the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau as an official agency in the government of the United States of America. And we have the very first director of the CFPB, as it's called, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, with us today, the Honorable Richard Cordray. I am honored to say just a few words about him before he speaks. I promise you, I will not steal his speech. He'll have plenty of things to say after I'm finished, but I do want to say a few things about him. Given that this is the day after the King holiday celebration, I think it appropriate to quote Dr. Martin Luther King. Dr. King reminded us that the truest measure of the person is not where the person stands in times of comfort and convenience, but rather where does a person stand in times of challenge and controversy? We have great challenges, and we have a lot of controversy that we're having to cope with in our country. Much of this has to do with how consumers are treated, and that's where Mr. Cordray comes in. In times of challenge and controversy, when consumers are facing circumstances where they're paying interest rates that are invidious, he has been there to do what he can to help us bring things back in line, and he's still working to do this. In times of challenge and controversy with reference to mortgage rates, and I'm sure there'll be some discussion about these things today, how mortgages should be handled, he has been a voice of clarity for us, and a lot of what he does is provide clarity in terms of how we should proceed. Many people are of the opinion that he does this without any sense of direction. Not true, dear friends. Any rule that he ultimately passes is passed upon or can be passed upon by FSOC, the Financial Stability Oversight Council. They can meet and they can decide that something should be reversed, and there are opportunities for whatever he concludes and works through, after consulting with the public, I might add. These things can be changed, overturned, amended. There are ways for which the public can participate in the process and for a means by which things that are put in place can actually be overturned. But I'm proud to tell you that he is a very, very competent person. He has great mental gymnastics, his intellect is superior, and that's good. But there's something that's better, the fact that he has courage. It takes a lot of courage to do what he has to do. It is not easy to be the director of the CFPB. It's not easy to become the director of the CFPB. We had quite a few challenges in getting him confirmed, but once he was confirmed, he hit the ground running. And he has the courage to stand up for consumers. In this country, as you may know, there are times when consumers are not made a priority, and as a result, some things have happened that have hurt consumers. Well, Mr. Cordray is there to hopefully prevent these things from occurring and to set us on a course such that consumers will receive their fair share of proper protection. I'll just give you one example of something that occurred, and then I'll ask Mr. Cordray to come forward. Prior to Dodd-Frank, we had something known as the yield spread premium. Many of you may be victims of the yield spread premium and not know it. If you bought a home, you may be a victim. The yield spread premium allowed a loan originator to qualify a person for a loan at a certain percentage rate. And to go to that person who was qualified for this certain percentage rate and say that you were qualified for a loan, but not tell the person what the person actually qualified for, and give a higher percentage rate. Let's say you qualified for 5%. Person could say to you, the originator, you qualified for an 8% loan. You would know that you qualified for 5%. You would take out a loan for 8%. And as a result of having this loan for 8%, you might find yourself at that time in what was called a 327, three years of a fixed rate, 27 years of a variable rate, or a 228, two years fixed, 28 years of a variable rate. And you might also find yourself with something called a prepayment penalty, meaning if you decided to refinance within a certain period of time, sometimes these prepayment penalties would coincide with these teaser rates that you would get. So if the prepayment penalty coincided with a teaser rate, you could not get out of that loan before it adjusted to this higher rate. And not being able to get out, well, you could get out, but you'd have to pay that penalty. Not being able to get out without paying the penalty prevented a lot of people from getting out of loans that they could have if not before having to pay the penalty. So you get this yield spread premium, you get a loan that's costing you more than it should, you have a prepayment penalty that keeps you in that loan so that you can't get into a lower rate before the adjustment takes place, you have the economy to all but collapse on you, you then can't afford the mortgage that you have. Maybe you could have afforded the mortgage that you should have, had you not been a victim of the yield spread premium. Well, these are the kinds of things that we tried to cure with Dodd-Frank, but unfortunately, we can't do everything with one bill. And as a result, we have the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau to continue to help us put in place rules and regulations that will prevent persons from being taken advantage of, as was the case with those who became victimized by this product known as the yield spread premium. So I'm honored today to have someone who is going to give us his initial thoughts, and then we will engage in Q and A, and you will have your opportunities to ask your questions. So I ask that you kindly be patient, that you kindly hear what he has to say initially, and thereafter, we will engage in Q and A. One more thing about Q and A. When we get to the Q and A, friends, we will not N O T. We will not give up the microphone. We will not hand you the microphone. So I'm saying this to you because there are many persons who are accustomed to holding it. We'll hold it for you. We have found that it's easy to transfer to someone, but it's not always easy to reclaim it. So we'll hold on to the microphone, and we'll do this in an orderly fashion. With this said, I'm going to ask that you give a big Texas welcome to the Honorable Richard Cordray, the director of the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. Somebody might want to stand. Come on, let's let him know that we appreciate his coming all the way to Texas. Let's hear it for Mr. Richard Cordray.[1098.75][1098.75][applause]
Thank you, Congressman Green, and it's a real pleasure to be welcomed here by all of you, friends, allies, supporters in the work that we're doing and the work that Congressman Green so fiercely defends and supports in the Congress of the United States. I wanted to say, first of all, that when we were singing "God Bless America," and we came toward the end of the song, and there's that passage where you have to kind of go up an octave. I think we're all bracing ourselves, and it was just typically considerate of the Congressman to let us down easy at that point, so I appreciated that very much. I also want to say that in the Congress, you should know that he brings the same demeanor to his work that you see here in Houston, which is that he spent years as a judge. That is known by people on both sides of the aisle, and people recognize him for his fairness, which he demonstrates all the time. It's a very partisan atmosphere at times in the House of Representatives. People disagree, but he keeps it on a plane of reasonable disagreement, makes his points, but also treats others fairly and gives them the benefit of a doubt with their points. And I'm always proud to be associated with him and the way he handles himself, and you should be as well. So I want to thank him for hosting, myself and some of my colleagues from the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, at this town hall meeting, and I want to thank him in particular personally for his work to defend and support the work we're doing on behalf of consumers, which started with the passage of the financial reform law in 2010, and has continued since, as we've tried to give meaning to that law and think about how to do the right thing in the face of significant issues and concerns. The yield spread premium that he just laid out for you in the mortgage market, which helped create the foreclosure crisis, which helped precipitate the financial crisis that brought down the economy, was just one example of the ways consumers can be treated badly and often not even know it until others can work to correct those kinds of predatory practices from happening. And that is one of the things that Congress and we have worked together to root out in the housing market. It's great to be in Houston. I don't think that I had ever had a chance to be in the city before, other than passing through the airport, and it is an impressive place, obviously a very diverse place, and one of the largest metropolises in the country, and it's been just a tremendous opportunity to be here today. We spent the morning at the Holy Rosary Catholic Church, and Congressman Green came for those sessions, and we were hosted by faith leaders talking about the concerns they have with predatory practices in small-dollar lending, whether it be payday loans or car title loans or certain kinds of installment loans. And that's an area we're working on at the Consumer Bureau to try to understand how we can continue to have access to credit for individuals in that marketplace, but in such a way as to not trap people into a cycle of debt that undermines their finances and in many cases can ruin their lives. So that's a difficult problem to work on, but we are hard at work at it. Just as a general matter, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau is a federal agency that has now existed for just over four years. We were born out of the financial crisis, and the purpose of the agency is to see that consumers are treated fairly in the financial marketplace. And it's a recognition by Congress that the financial marketplace is not an easy place for a lot of people to figure out, to understand, to be able to navigate through some complex concepts, such as some of the mortgage practices that he was describing, that I think we still find it hard to get our heads around, and that took advantage of people, whether if it's the credit card market, or auto loans, or student loans, or the market where we end up with debt collectors pursuing us, sometimes rightly, sometimes wrongly, and what our rights are there, the credit reporting marketplace where we all have credit files on us. We don't always know or understand what significance that has in our lives, but it can really dictate whether you have access to credit or not, or on what terms and at what price. And if those records aren't accurate and aren't correct, that can hurt people severely. Nowadays, a lot of people, when they apply for jobs, there will be a background check done on their credit, and if that isn't satisfactory, they may not get the job, they may never be told why they're supposed to be, and they may not even know that if they could have cleared up some problems in their credit report, or maybe some things are inaccurate, they might have had a better chance. So these things matter enormously to people, and our job is to look out for consumers, as I say, to stand on their side and see that they're treated fairly. We have authority to enforce the law, which is something that we have been aggressive about doing. Not everybody has liked that, but it's important for us to do that. So far, in our four years, we've returned over $11 billion to more than 25 million consumers, and we've penalized firms hundreds of millions of dollars for practices that violate the law and treat people unfairly. Another thing that we do at the Bureau that I want to emphasize is, we will receive, and we're eager to have complaints from people across the country who think they've been treated unfairly on any of the products that I described, and if they will tell us about those complaints, file a complaint with us, which can be done easily online at consumerfinance.gov or through our toll-free number, 855-411-CFPB. We have so far received almost 800,000 complaints from people all across the country. We get relief for people where we can, whether it's money back at times or something corrected on your credit report, as I described a moment ago, or getting debt collectors who are harassing you to stop calling. These are all things that matter to people, and we can get that kind of relief. It also, all of that information that comes to us on our complaint line becomes information that informs how we go about our work. Whether we're going to take one enforcement action or another may depend on what consumers tell us about what problems they see in real time and how those problems are affecting them and their families and loved ones. So that's all work that we're doing today. Another important job that we have, and the Congressman and I have talked at some length about this, is we enforce the fair lending laws to root out discrimination in the financial marketplace, whether it's discrimination based on race, or religion, or ethnic origin, or gender, doesn't matter. People should be treated the same as one another. They shouldn't be treated worse because of some perceptions about their background or stereotyping. This is the Equal Credit Opportunity Act, which was enacted more than 40 years ago, but we have been enforcing that, I think aggressively, but steadily and reasonably, and rooting out those practices. We've had the largest single resolution for discrimination in auto lending in the history of this country. We did that jointly with the Justice Department. We've had significant mortgage discrimination cases, both for redlining, that is refusing to lend into certain areas based on what we believe is unjustified assumptions about the population in those areas, and reverse redlining, where lending is done into certain areas but on worse terms and on stereotyped assumptions. And so that work has been important, and we make no apologies for doing it, because everybody should have equal access to credit. That's been the law of the land, as I said, for many years, but it's important, and it only becomes reality if the law is enforced. We're also working on a proposal right now to address problems around payday loans, auto title loans, and similar products. We've found that too often lenders offer these products without making any assessment at all of the consumer's ability to repay. We find that at times, they don't want the consumer to repay. What they want the consumer to do is get stuck in the debt and have to keep paying fee after fee after fee without ever repaying the actual loan. And we heard stories this morning from people in communities across Texas about loans of $500 ultimately costing the consumer $3,000 or more to repay, if they can ever even do that, which is so difficult for people. And we heard really heartbreaking stories about the effect this has on people's financial chances and those of their families. The premise at the heart of our mission, again, is simply that consumers should be treated fairly in the financial marketplace. That's all there is to it. But it has been a big job to see that that actually comes about, and people need someone standing on their side to make sure that happens. We also work to support consumers. We want consumers to understand the choices that they face. We want those choices to be simpler, more direct, less complicated, less full of trickery and deception. And we have been working to simplify the kinds of information that's given to consumers and make those choices clearer and more accessible to people. So I'm pleased to have the chance to be here today at the Congressman's invitation. I'm pleased to be in Houston. I'm pleased to be in Texas. The engagement we have with people and what I have a chance to hear from you today will help us improve and inform our work, and I look forward to having you share with us experiences that you want us to know about. Thank you so much.[1727.33][1727.33][applause]
Thank you. Thank you very much. A couple of things before we actually get to the Q and A. If you would, raise your hands if you have a question, and we will give you our numbers. Okay, Pete, and all right. Everybody, keep your hands up until you get a number. And while we're getting the numbers out to you, let me mention this. I was hoping that the pastor would get here such that I could introduce him. Pastor Remus Wright is a very dear friend of mine, and his CDC developed this complex, if you will. When he is not available, George Anderson is, and I'm proud to tell you that George Anderson, who helps us with this venue, is here today. And George, I want you to know that we are very proud of the work that you have done to put this facility in place and to maintain it to the extent that you have. In fact, I don't want to hurt your business, maybe it'll help your business, I don't know, but I think you charge too little for the use of the facility. It's a very nice facility, and-- It's a very nice facility, and I'm always honored to come here, because it costs so little to use this facility. And I think it's open to the public, I'm not sure, I'm not going to promote your business, but I want to thank you for allowing us to bring our business here. So let's give George Anderson, George, would you stand, please? Let's give George a big hand, please, for opening up the facility to us. We do have to pay for the use, so that you'll, everybody knows it. We pay the going rate, we don't get any special deals. Okay? And next point is, we are recording this, and it will be available on YouTube as early as tomorrow. So you don't have to bother to record yourselves. If you choose to, you can, but it will be available on YouTube. And finally, do we have any members of the press in the room? If you are a member of the press and you're in the room, would you stand? We'd just like to know you're here, we will not put you out. Okay? I see Alex back there, okay? Alex, who are you with today?
[inaudible]
All right, thank you very much. And sir? The Caribbean? All right, thank you. And you, sir?
[inaudible]
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the press? We sent the notices out to as much press as we could, all of the major media, and we have found that our local, small, hard print will usually show up for these events, and we're grateful that you do. So thank you very much. And perhaps if we finish timely, Mr. Cordray may be able to take a question or two for you and let you get a photograph. We want to make sure that because you came, you should benefit from his presence and that you'll get a photograph. Okay, with that said, let's see who has the number one, and if you have number one, I'm going to give the microphone to Mr. Cordray, all right? We'll go to number one, and after number one, we'll go to number two, number three, number four, number five. You know where you are in the process, so be prepared to ask a question or give a brief comment. We really would like a question, if we can get a question. With this said, sir, you're number one. Would you kindly identify yourself and ask a question?
I'm Bill, Houston Realtor Association, and there's a practice that takes place in Texas that I feel is very discriminatory towards the people of Texas. In Texas, home builders are allowed to give discounts to buyers using a mortgage company that they own. The discount disappears if the buyer wants to use an outside lender who could give them a better rate. This practice happens constantly in Houston.
Yeah, the Real Estate Settlement Procedures Act, which was enacted in the early '70s, is meant to stamp out the requirement that people use a certain provider as part of a transaction and give consumers freedom of choice. It's been a difficult statute to enforce over the years, and there's been rules under it that the Department of Housing and Urban Development developed at one time. We have been overhauling those rules more recently, and we've also been enforcing that law since we became an agency. We'd be interested in hearing more about the specific instances you're describing, so we'll have someone make sure to round up with you and get what information you may have today, or other information you want to provide to us, to consider whether anything that you're describing would be a violation of law. But the principle of the matter is that when you go to buy a house, and you deal with perhaps a Realtor, or a broker, or a lender, and also a title agent, and somebody for insurance, and somebody for the title insurance and the like, that you have freedom of choice as the consumer whom you're dealing with.
All right, number two.
Thank you for having this meeting, Congressman and Director Corday. I have contacted every state and federal agencies regarding, we are being foreclosed on twice by a nonprofit fee that stems from Community Association Institute. Both times we are foreclosed on, it is not for fair market value, it is for a fraction, and this stays on our credit for at least 10 years. There is no way that we can fight these nonprofits, because they have so much lobbying power, as the Realtors in this room are well aware of. Thank you.
Okay. If you want to file a complaint with us, so we can understand your situation, okay? All right, okay, thank you.
Number three, where are you?
I think three is going four.
Four, okay, number four, where are you? Number four, you should have the number four. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Again, Congressman, we appreciate you pulling this town hall meeting together. And again, Director Cordray, on behalf of Pastor Remus Wright, we're happy to have you here. Have a very simple question. As most of our community is not familiar with a lot of the regulatory and the statutes that fall under CFPB, moreover, they don't understand Dodd-Frank, oh nine yards. What can we do to engage with your Bureau so that we can be more aggressive in terms of consumer education?
Okay, it's a very good question, because I can tell you that when I first came to the Consumer Bureau, and again, it was a brand-new agency at that point, I learned that the agency had taken over, Congress had given us authority to enforce more than two dozen different statutes, and I by no means was familiar with all of them, and it's a lot to understand. What I want to say is, what we're trying to do with a lot of this information is put it into easily understandable form, so that people can access it when it's relevant to their lives. I don't think anybody's trying to prepare for an exam to take a quiz on this, but it's that if you have a, if you suddenly have a problem with debt collectors that you didn't have before, you might want to look up and see, well, what are my rights? What can I do? How can I get them to stop calling? How can I make them aware that I think I repaid that debt already, and that's not something they should be collecting on, or it's the wrong amount? So what we have developed is, on our website at consumerfinance.gov, we have the answers to questions that we are frequently asked by consumers, so we know they come up over and over again, so that it's important for consumers to have the information. We call it Ask CFPB. And on that part of our website, there are the best answers that we have to more than 1,000 different questions consumers have asked us, and they're grouped by area. So if you want to know about debt collection, again, suddenly you're getting calls, and you don't know what to make of it. You could go on there, look at some of that information, and be better able to protect yourself and stand up for yourself. Or if you have a mortgage problem of some kind, and you're not familiar with it, and you want to know what we have to say about it, that's on there. So that's one thing that we're doing, that's sort of general information, just-in-time information at the right time in your life. There's also, we've come to understand that consumers have certain decision points they might come to in their life that matter enormously for them, are going to have consequences far beyond just what they're spending today or spending tomorrow. And being able to understand what questions to ask, what information to know about those big lifetime decisions becomes particularly important. So we've developed a, what, an area of the website that we call Owning a Home, which is if you're thinking about homeownership, what kinds of questions should you ask yourself? What kinds of pitfalls should you look out for? What kinds of, how does the process work? If you had somebody in your family who was an expert in the area, you would go to them, you would trust them. You can trust us, we're a neutral expert agency that doesn't have an axe to grind, we're not trying to sell anybody anything, it's just very neutral information. So we have that on Owning a Home. We have it on Paying for College for families that are coming up. My wife and I have twins who are juniors in high school. We're trying to think about, as they go to college, how they would afford a college education, what it puts difference between student loans and grants, and private student loans and federal student loans. People don't know much about this if they haven't dealt with it, but suddenly it becomes very important in their lives. We're going to be developing and be coming out soon with a module on buying a car, which is another major transaction for people, and there are different retirement choices. So we're very focused on the fact that consumers need information. It's hard to go online and get it, because the first thing that pops up is about 100 different sites where they're trying to sell you something, or push you into something that's in their interest, not yours. And so we're trying to compete with our neutral information. Consumerfinance.gov is a great place to go for lots of different kinds of information of this sort.
Okay, number five?
Right here. Okay. My name is Joetta Stevenson, and I'm a client of Catholic charities. And my question for you is, is there anything that the CFPB can do to prohibit predatory lenders from taking money out of a client's bank account? Because that's one of the biggest fears.
Yeah, I think many people are not aware that even if they've signed up for a loan where part of the, part of the loan is that they can take the money directly from your bank account to repay the loan, that you can undo that at any time. You have control over that choice. And in fact, it is against the law for them to say you can't have a loan unless you sign up for that to begin with, although many times that is the outcome that comes out. So it's important for people to recognize, again, that they have a right here, they can control their bank account. And if they've given somebody the authority, what, maybe they realized it, maybe they didn't. Sometimes it's in the fine print, and you didn't quite notice that that's what you were doing. You can go back to them and rescind that consent. And if you find that they are unwilling to acquiesce in your decision about that, then that's a violation, and you should complain to the CFPB, so that we could do something about it.
Number six?
Six.
Six?
Wonderful.
Good afternoon. My name's Robert Johnson, and thank you guys for holding this town hall meeting and being here today. My question is, it's really twofold. What is the definition of a consumer? And my other question is, I believe, well, here in Texas, we have a statute that protects consumers, it's called the Texas Deceptive Trade Practices Act. There's also a federal statute, I believe, it's called the Federal Debt Collection Act. And if you are familiar with that statute, when it comes to debt collectors, can you briefly tell us what they can and cannot do? One of the things I know they can't do for sure is, they can't call you on your job to try to collect an outstanding debt, I'm sorry. And there's some other things they can't do. If you could briefly elaborate on that, thank you.
Sure. There's actually a number of different laws. And before I came to this position, I was the Attorney General, elected Attorney General in the state of Ohio. And under Ohio law, we had two different statutes. We had a consumer protection statute, and we had a Trade Practices Act of the kind you're describing. Many states have both of those. As is true for the agency now at the federal level, consumer is typically defined as an individual, not a company, not a business, but an individual where the financial matters have to do with sort of normal household finance or consumer credit to buy things as an individual. Unfortunately, that means we can't protect small businesses and nonprofits. When I was Attorney General in Ohio, I could use the Trade Protection Act, which I don't have at the federal level, to protect small businesses and nonprofits that often were exploited in the same way. So if a library was cheated out of something, we could try to get back their money. But at the federal level, for this agency, our focus is on individual consumers, households, families, but not businesses. All right. The Fair Debt Collection Practices Act is a federal law. It was enacted in 1977, so that's the year I graduated from high school, a long time ago. We are going to be updating that law, because we have the authority to write rules now that will bring it into the modern era. Just to give you a sense, that law was passed before fax machines were even invented, and now we kind of don't use fax machines very much anymore. That's how long ago it was. Another example is, in that statute, it refers several times to communications by telegram. I can't remember the last time I got a telegram or sent a telegram, so that's how long ago that was. Under the Fair Debt Collection Practices Act, there's a number of different practices that debt collectors might engage in that have been found to be prohibited, and barred, and are against the law, because they were deemed to be too harassing, even though they might have been effective. That wasn't the be all and end all, it was also thinking about the dignity and appropriate way in which people should be treated. As you said, different places where they can communicate with you, and different people they can communicate with, are part of what the law protects you on. They can actually contact you in the workplace, but as soon as you tell them to not do so anymore, they have to stop. That's what the law says. They can contact you at home, but if they're calling repeatedly in a harassing manner, or if they call before 8:00 AM or after 9:00 PM, that's against the law, as it has been developed. If they're reaching out to your family and friends, others, not you directly, about your debt in an effort to shame you into paying it, that's against the law. If they're doing things like telling you that you are subject to criminal punishment and arrest for not paying their debt, that's false, and that's against the law. Pretty much any deceptive practice or unreasonably harassing practice is against that law. And I would say that the single area that people in this country complain about the most in the whole realm of consumer protection, all the things I've described, is debt collection. There's about, it's understandable, after the financial crisis, when everybody was hit so hard, people lost jobs, and people lost their homes, we have something like 30, 40 million Americans who have debt collectors pursuing them. And many of those debt collectors cross the line, go over the line in their zeal to get the money, because they get paid out of what they bring in, and so it's fraught with risk. There's lots of violations, and it is the most complained-about area that we see. So it's an important one to ask about.
Seven.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Congressman Green and Director Cordray, for being here. It's really incredibly important for us to hear what you have to say. Following up on one of the comments about what is a consumer, one of the issues that we have as Realtors is, when you get to closing and your TRID process and your consumption, I guess, what do you call the HUD one now, the, yeah, the CD or the consummation disclosure? I think that what we're, what's happening is sellers are sort of being left out of this equation. And oftentimes, sellers don't realize all the ramifications of the sale until they get to closing. Are you doing anything to sort of equalize that a little bit and treat the sellers as a consumer also?
That's an interesting question, and very fair question. So just to give people the background, who may be less familiar than it sounds like you are, there are lots of protections around the mortgage process. It is a complicated transaction for people. It is usually the single biggest financial transaction they may ever have in their lives, which is buying or selling a house that can be worth tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars. And getting it wrong can really affect people for years and years. And as was true in the financial crisis, where so many people got into bad mortgages, they really didn't understand what they were getting into, they weren't the appropriate mortgages for them, and they lost, you know, life savings as well as their homes. So coming out of that, Congress required the new Consumer Bureau, our agency, to do a number of things to strengthen the mortgage market. We had seven different rules that we had to enact within 18 months, which was a very heroic task, and our people broke their backs in order to do that. We made that deadline. We also had to overhaul the mortgage collection and reporting of data, which is something that we've now finished, but does not take effect yet. In between those, we were required to do another regulation, which is the one you're describing, sometimes known to people as TRID, the TILA-RESPA Integrated Disclosure. We know it as the No B4UO Rule, because the purpose of it is to simplify and streamline the forms that people get, so that they can better understand the mortgage transaction. And the focus there in the law is on the consumer, meaning the borrower. That is, the buyer of the home, the one who's borrowing and taking out a mortgage. The emphasis in the law is not so much on the seller, although you're absolutely right and fair to say that the seller needs to understand what they're doing as well. There may be an assumption in the law, I don't always know what's in Congress's mind. I think even Representative Green would tell you, he doesn't always know what's in Congress's mind when they pass a, but it may be that as the seller of the home, you're already knowledgeable about the home-buying process, because you bought a home before, and, you know, that may be the rationale. But these forms, essentially what there was, there used to be two forms at the time you applied for a mortgage, and that's the lending transaction, the credit transaction that brings it under our authority. And then two different forms when you closed on the transaction, you got to the closing table and ended up actually signing to buy the house. There were two different statutes involved, there were two different agencies involved before, and Congress very much wanted us to close that up and have there be one form at each stage. Because getting two forms at each stage was confusing to people. Why am I getting two different forms? Do they do different things? What is the difference? You know, why am I getting this? So we worked to put that together. We have put that together, that's been finalized. The other major change is that the person buying the home, the borrower who's taking out the mortgage, now gets the closing form three days before they get to the closing table. So one of the things we saw happening that Congress was concerned about was, you get to the to the closing table and suddenly things are changing. And you don't necessarily have a lot of leeway. You know, maybe you're buying a home and selling a home at the same time. And suddenly, you know, the interest rate is higher than they said before and they're telling you, well, you just got to have to sign. That's the deal. That's the way it is. And we think people are entitled to know in advance, to think about it, to get their questions answered, and get to the closing table with some assurance that they know exactly what's going to happen. And it is what people promised them in the process. So that's what we have done. Now, as to whether more maybe should be done for sellers, that's a good question. Congress didn't tell us to do that. The seller arguably is a consumer as well. And if you have more thoughts about that, we'd be glad to hear them. But our focus has been on not so much the buyer or the seller, but the borrower, the one taking out a mortgage. If somebody's buying a house and paying cash for it, that doesn't necessarily involve us in the same way because it doesn't involve a credit transaction.
Director Cordray and Congressman Green, thank you so much for bringing this to us. And I hope that in another year, you're able to come back again and give us an update about some of the changes and some of the things that Congress will and will not do. Wish I was as eloquent as my friend Ward. My name is Gene Fagelson. I'm also a Realtor going on 39 years in the business. I'm also a real estate instructor specializing in real estate finance. Recently, I attended a movie which I rarely ever see, once every two or three years, The Big Short. You have to see it three times to understand it. And even at that, you got to read your homework to understand. It was a fictionalized version, to those of you who have not seen it, of real, true events that happened that caused the Great Depression that culminated in 2008, 2009. And you took over in 2010. And we're so pleased that President Obama appointed you because your credentials were so impeccable as a chief prosecutor in Ohio and working for Judge Bork and for Justice Kennedy, phenomenal credentials that would be acceptable on both sides of the aisle. I guess my question is, we see the big banks that are out there that allowed a lot of the stuff to happen with some of the other banks, that you're doing the high-risk loans. Those banks at one time had like 37% of the market. Now they're over 40% of the market, the big banks. The same people that was running the banks back in the early 2000s up to 2008 are still running, for the most part, those banks. Very few people have gone to the federal penitentiary. I know the Justice Department does the major prosecution for you. You have some power, but you turn it over to them. What's the next step?
So let me just, first of all, The Big Short, I've read the book as well, is a great kind of account of the kinds of things that happened, particularly reckless lending on Wall Street by people who felt they really understood what they were doing but apparently didn't. And a lot of them lost a lot of money in the process and many of us were harmed as a result. I mean, you and I may have had nothing to do with what kind of lending was going on in Wall Street, but if it led to the economy crashing, I might lose my job, or I might lose my home, or even if I'm paying on a regular mortgage, if there's eight people around me in foreclosure, that's going to affect my neighborhood. You know, these are the kinds of things that we all paid the price for very irresponsible action by some and often lax regulation that did not rein in that activity. So as to the big banks, you know, they remain large. There are a number of financial institutions that did blow up during the crisis. Some of the biggest mortgage lenders, like Countrywide and Washington Mutual, did blow up and ended up failing. IndyMac was the largest single bank failure in the history of the FDIC, cost tens of billions of dollars to sort that one out. And there have been people who've gone to jail over this, but none of the major executives at any of the major financial institutions. And I think there's a fair amount of resentment in the country about that. But one of the problems is a lot of what was done were not criminal acts. They were reckless, they were negligent, they cost a lot of people, a lot of money and a lot of heartache, but they weren't necessarily against the law. Part of what we're trying to do is put some new laws in place, some new rules in place so that if these things were ever done again, they would violate the law and people could be pursued. So that's one piece of it. The other thing that's interesting, just to tie up another piece, we're seeing the big banks actually now decline in their amount of mortgage lending. That's happened in the last couple, three years. It's an interesting development. I don't know that people saw that coming. But there's more mortgage lending that's being done by smaller institutions such as community banks and credit unions, and there's more being done by independent lenders. So I don't know what to make of that yet. It's something we follow very closely to try to understand what the consequences are of either of our rules or just changes in the marketplace because we have to oversee it. But the big banks have pulled back a bit from mortgage lending, even as mortgage lending is rising around the country, which is a good thing, more people are having access to more credit to buy houses. And I think homeownership, although many people are anxious about it and a little afraid of it right now, remains the single best way for middle-class Americans to build wealth on a long-term basis. And the forced savings of paying on a mortgage every month does that. So I'm a big booster of the real estate market. I want Realtors to succeed, keep selling people houses, but on responsible terms with responsible lenders. That's what I think we're seeing right now and I think it's a very good thing.
Number nine.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Cole, Executive Director for Ask Me, a local 1550. Welcome and thank you Congressman. The question that I have goes back to what you were speaking to a little earlier. You said earlier today, you met with some faith-based leaders in reference to the payday loans. And so my question to you is, on behalf of our members, we have a lot of them that get consumed, and I do mean consumed, with being caught in a cycle. And it's great that it's being addressed. But what I really want to know from you, if you can direct me, how does the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau provide enough education and information so that we would be able to disseminate this information out to our members that are caught in the middle of that? Like what is the, you know, where do they go? It's great to go online and see a website, but there's nothing that actually puts in place what they need to do or steps they need to take when they're caught up in the middle. So if you can just tell me where we can direct them, or if there's even any clinics that are going to be coming about, how we would be able to embrace that and get it to our members so they can get out of trouble.
Okay. First of all, several things. I'll take your greetings back to Lefty Saunders, who's your National President. He's a friend of mine from Ohio and I'm going to be seeing him in a couple of weeks. And I've worked with Ask Me in Ohio for years as an elected official there, very productively. As to what information for people who are in trouble with payday loans, it's a very difficult thing. It is not easy to know how to get out of that cycle. We heard this morning about some CDFI efforts here in the Houston area and United Way to develop rescue products for people to get them out of that, to pay off the loans and then put them on a better track of a lower interest rate to try to resolve it. Some places around the country, there are products like that, in many places there are not. Understanding the importance of trying to avoid some of these high-cost loans and find other alternatives is very important as well. One of the things that I would say that we're actually working with labor unions around the country on is we have developed a curriculum. It's not a huge curriculum, it's a manageable curriculum that we call Your Money, Your Goals. And we have been pushing that out and having trainings on that with social service providers around the country, community groups like United Way and others, but also with labor unions. We've adapted a version of it for labor unions and their members. I don't know if we have a training coming up in the near future in the Houston area, but I could take that request back and we could see what we could do. We could get that material to you to potentially work with your members and/or maybe we could come and do a training on that. So we would consider doing that. Thank you.
Ten.
Number ten.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you Congressman Green for allowing us and not making us not speak because of professional courtesy since we're not in your district. And Mr. Corday, I would like to ask you how you are addressing cosigners because I co-sign for my daughter. She got foreclosed on twice. For 13 years, my credit has been loused up to say the least and nobody can help. I tried to pay, I had the money, and they just wouldn't allow it. Also, I was dealing with Fannie Mae and PNC Bank with their attorneys and they pretended like they were going to help me. And this was on Thursday and they foreclosed on Tuesday. So I do not think that that's very kosher to say the least, but I want to, I would like to understand how FHA and Fannie Mae, how the consumer is being protected with them when they have powerful attorneys helping them out.
Okay. So the first thing I would say, cosigning is something people need to understand is beset with a great deal of risk. If you cosign a loan, you become responsible for it, even though sometimes people feel like they're just sort of backing up the primary signatory on it. You are equally responsible and they can go after either of you. What I'm not sure I understand in your story is that you indicated as the cosigner, you wanted to step up and you wanted to pay off the loan and they would not allow you. I don't understand that because you should have a right, as the signatory on the loan, to be able to repay the loan at any time that you're legally allowed to do so unless there was a prepayment penalty of some kind. But it doesn't seem likely that that was true in a foreclosure scenario. So I don't really understand that part of the story. And it feels like that was wrongful conduct if they wouldn't allow you to pay off a loan that you, as one of the legally obliged people, were trying to pay off. So I don't know what to tell you about that. Doesn't sound right to me.
Number eleven.
One.
Back to number one.
Hi, I'm Lucy Pyatt. I am with the Chinese Community Center. We're a HUD-approved housing counseling agency and part of the United Way Thrive Network as well as being a member of the National Coalition of Asian Pacific American Community Developers. So thank you both for being here and for the work that you do on behalf of AAPI consumers, particularly with data disaggregation for the Mortgage Disclosure Act. We really appreciate that. I wanted to ask, I manage our housing program and our financial capability programs, and what we see with our AAPI clients is again and again debt collection acts that do not provide any in-language services. We know that you're working on that for mortgage servicers, but I wanted to ask with Fair Debt Collection Practices Act if there's any movement for in-language requirements for those clients.
Okay. First of all, so you work with a group that is a HUD-approved housing counseling service. Those are, to my mind, the unsung heroes of the foreclosure crisis who really were the experts who stepped in and helped a lot of people save homes that otherwise clearly would have lost them because people don't really understand what their rights and obligations are, but the housing counselors could come and provide that expertise. And we've done a lot of training around the country with the HUD-approved Housing Counseling Services on the new mortgage servicing rules, and it's been a great way to disseminate that information. And we have been working with the institutions to let them know that when we come and look at mortgage servicing, we're going to be asking the HUD-approved Housing Counseling Networks what they think of how the institution is doing so that they have to step up and be more willing to engage with you all on a daily basis. So that's important. On the data disaggregation that you mentioned, this is, we oversee the collection and reporting of home mortgage data from all over the country, which is very important to being able to understand what's happening in the mortgage market, whether they're for lending violations and other things. And the question that was raised to us in the Asian Pacific Islander community was, could we take that broad category, which covers a lot of subcategories that are very distinct from one another? Koreans are not the same as Japanese. Chinese immigrants are not the same as Vietnamese. And there's a lot of different categories where people are treated differently, even within the Asian community. And would we try to separate out that data? And we did decide that we are going to try to do so, as you mentioned. So as to debt collection and mortgage servicing, the issue of language, it's a difficult issue. We faced it first with remittance transfers, which is where people send money abroad. And we had specific language Congress included there. Congressman Green probably had something to do with it and his colleagues, that if the materials were presented to you in a language, then follow-up activities had to be presented in the same language. You couldn't bring you in with one language and then switch to English later. That feels like the right principle to us, but it's complicated to figure out how to make it work. We're working right now on new rules on the debt collection area as we discussed earlier to update that law from 1977. And this is one of the things we're trying to figure out, what's the right way to proceed. Typically, debt collectors will go to another language other than English where they feel that it will benefit them in terms of communicating, but they may not want to remain there when they have things they have to tell you, but they don't want you to really know or understand. So we think that could be an unfair practice and these are the kinds of things we're thinking about. But we're in the process right now on that. We're not finished with that at this point. Thank you.
Number two.
Let me just make an announcement. If you have a question, we're going to try to get to everyone. If you came a little bit late, we still want to hear your questions. I think we're to end at, Kevin, come over, whisper in my ear. Hold just a moment. We got about 20 more minutes. And if you'll keep your questions brief, we'll get to everybody. I'm confident we can.
Quick statement.
And we're giving out numbers. So if you did not ask a question and you'd like to ask one and you have not asked a question, would you raise your hand so that we can give you a number? We have a system that we put in place. And we did not get your question, ma'am? Okay, we'll come to you. All right, she's number four and apparently that was a little bit.
Number two, three, four.
Hi, thank you Director Corday. My name is Renee Hightower and I'm a Realtor. I just simply want to say, it's not even a question, it's just to say thank you. One of the tools that you have in your toolbox on your website is on how to own a home and it's been proven to be very valuable to clients when they are in the process of buying their homes. It's been very user-friendly and I just want to let everyone know that the website is very user-friendly and it can also be used as a tool in our activities as Realtors as well. But thank you very much for your time.
That is very kind of you to say that. I'll take that back to our team. What they often hear is the criticism but not praise, so that's very nice of you. I appreciate that. They work very hard on that tool. And we'll continue to develop it if you have suggestions and improvements. We're eager to hear them.
Three.
All right, number three. That means that we've gone through the entire cycle. No, 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 hold the microphone. Do not give up the microphone.
No, sir, I'm not. I'm not.
Ma'am, there's a lot of pride you have inside there.
Okay. I have a question for Mr. Corday and thank you for being here today in Houston. The question is, well, would you please explain the timeframe for the collection agencies to pursue legal action against a consumer, please, in the state of Texas?
Okay, so the question is, suppose I owe a debt, or somebody thinks I owe on a debt, how long do they have to pursue me before they can no longer collect? So that's called a statute of limitations and sometimes referred to as a statute of repose, and those can be two different things. That's governed by state law, not federal law, so it varies across the country in the different ones of the 50 states. And so I don't happen to know what it is in Texas, but it's typically one or more years. And after that point, is it four? You think it's four in Texas? Okay, all right. So for four years, they could pursue you, but after that point, it becomes out-of-time debt and they are not allowed to file a lawsuit against you to collect it. Typically, it's been said in the past that they can continue to communicate with you because you still have the moral obligation to pay the debt even though you're under no legal obligation to do so. We're looking at rules in this area that we think would update this and be more specific about it so that if they do want to communicate with you after it's time barred, perhaps they would need to open the conversation by saying to you that they cannot sue you on this debt, et cetera, et cetera, and then you can make your own judgment, what you think is the right way to handle it. But the purpose of that is to stop stale claims. I mean, at some point, you don't necessarily carry all your paperwork around with you in life. And if you settled a debt 10 years ago, it's considered unreasonable that you should have to keep proving again and again that you paid that debt. So this is something we're trying to figure out how to balance that so that the harassment is offset by people paying their legitimate debts within a reasonable amount of time.
Four.
Number four.
My question is for Representative Green. I'm here as an individual, a retired individual. For 44 years, I have paid on my very, very good group healthcare insurance policy. I would like to know whether or not the congressional members I would like to know whether or not the congressional members knew of the impact of this Affordable Care Act was the intent to break up group policies and force people into individuals as policyholders, because that's what's happened. The way it was written and the tax feature that was put in there has given universities, states, governments, corporations, businesses, the opportunity to discriminate against the retired people. And it is in our retirement years that we typically have the most health care needs. And I understand there's 88,000 in Houston alone of retired people who have been forced into or out of our group policies and as individual policyholders. Did Congress know? Did they read the statute, the bill? Did they know the impact this was going to have? I don't say that the government made them throw us under the bus, but that's what's happened, because we are a big part of the insurance cost, I'm certain, simply because of our age and our health needs.
Thank you. First, let me suggest to you that I wouldn't have guessed that you've been paying for 44 years. And I compliment you for doing so and maintaining insurance. It's important for us to all have insurance. When we passed the Affordable Care Act, this question was posed to us many times, have we read it? I promise you, I did read it. And to read it, not only were you required to read the some 2,000 pages that were before us, but there were other references that we had to go to. And it was not an easy read. So I want to assure you that I did read it. In fact, we had a town hall meeting right down the street at the Power Center, and had over 1,000 people in attendance with questions concerning the Affordable Care Act. To answer your question as succinctly as I can, and I'd be honored to have you give it to us in writing, and I'll do additional research, there was no intent to throw you under the bus, no intent to cause you to have to find yourself looking for insurance at a higher rate or insurance that you find unacceptable. So if you'll give me a little bit more information on it, I'll have a staffer get with you, and I'll do additional research to see what your circumstance is. Now, in doing that, I am limited by a couple of things. Where you live imposes a restriction upon me, but it doesn't impose a restriction upon my finding out information for myself that I'll just share with you. But I do have restrictions imposed upon me in terms of whom I can serve as a member of Congress. All members have to serve the people within their congressional districts. To give you an extreme example that will make this a bit clearer, if you were from, let's say, some city that is 2,000 miles away, you can understand that that congressman in that city 2,000 miles away would be the person most appropriate to serve you. Well, it still applies even if you're only 200 miles or two miles outside of the district. But because I want to help you to the extent that I can, and it's a question you're raising here, I would treat it as a question that I'd like to have answered, and I'll share the answers that I get with you, okay? I hope that'll satisfy your needs. All right, we'll go to our next person. And as we're doing this, I told you that I wanted to announce that the pastor of the church that works with this facility is on the way. I think earlier I said he was on the way, but he's here now. And I want to acknowledge him, because I think that he's done a very fine job in working with the community to develop this facility. And Pastor Remus Wright, would you kindly stand so that we can give you an expression of appreciation? Thank you very much, Pastor. And here is the, one of the very interesting things that I'd like to share about him. Now, he does not have to be here for this event. George is here. There is no requirement that he be in attendance. But at most of the events that we have had here, if not all of them, he has been in attendance. And I think that speaks volumes about his desire to see things occur in a very positive and productive way in the facility that he has something to do with. He doesn't manage it, he's not the overseer, but he does care about the events and how well they are taking place in his facility. So Pastor, thank you very much for coming. We know you didn't have to, but we appreciate you for doing it. Thank you very much. One more time. Okay. Time is running, moving along, and I'm talking, so I apologize for that. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So my name is Michael Davis. I'm a Realtor as well. I'm also a member of the National Association of Real Estate Brokers, so my question is for Director Cordry. But before I say that, though, Congressman, I'm a member of your district, and I appreciate your leadership and all that you do for us. Mr. Cordry, the National Association of Real Estate Brokers is the African-American Trade Association. We advocate for democracy in housing, and we had our national conference here in Houston. And one of the things President Ron Cooper stated, the statistic that of all the mortgages that were received last year, less than 6% of them went to African-American households. So my question is, when you hear a statistic like that, that level of disparity, what are your thoughts? What's the Bureau's thoughts around working through something like that?
I think it's really troublesome, and I'll tell you why, several reasons. First of all, it raises questions in my mind as to whether we have fair lending issues in terms of credit not being extended on the same terms to all of our communities. So that's a troublesome statistic to me. Second, and I think this has been true since the crisis, there has been lower levels of mortgage origination to minority communities, not simply African-American, but all minority communities, which means, if you look at it, that they're missing out on homeownership, which, as I said already, is the best ticket to building wealth in our society. This is on the heels of the crisis itself having hurt many members in the minority community who had much of their wealth that they had amassed tied up in home values. And of course, home values plummeted at that time, so there was, actually, across the economy, there were trillions of dollars lost in household wealth. So I think it's a considerable concern. We did take with the Justice Department the single largest action against redlining against a bank, Hudson City Savings Bank, in the northeastern United States, the New York, New Jersey, and Delaware, Philadelphia area recently. And we will take more such actions if they're warranted. But, you know, there has been a serious blow to both wealth creation and homeownership in the minority communities in the form of the financial crisis and now the aftermath. And it's something we want to see turn around in a hurry. The numbers did increase at least slightly for both African-American and Latino households last year, but again, that's operating against what you rightly described, or low levels and unnaturally low levels in a few years after the crisis here. It's something that needs to change.
Okay, that was number five, I believe. Number six. Okay.
Hello, my name is Willie Moore. I have a question regarding the credit report. Currently, you get a free credit report that allows you to look at your credit as a consumer, and then the mortgage company can request a tri-marriage credit report. And a lot of time, the reports don't really match up. The consumer credit report has 30, 40 pages of information in it that's not, I would say, easy to decipher, whereas the tri-marriage credit report is a short version of the detailed information that's required to make a loan decision. Is there a possibility of you going to a standard format that would be required of the mortgage company and the lenders, so that we all get in the same type format credit report?
Yeah, I think that's a very worthy item for us to consider. Let me try to describe the background here. Credit reporting as a business has never been regulated before at any level of government, before the CFPB became an agency. Wasn't really regulated at state level, wasn't regulated at the federal level. And it's dominated by three large private companies, Equifax, Experian, and TransUnion, that have grown up over years, and each of them now keeps credit files on more than 200 million Americans, virtually every one of us who's an adult, who has any information of any kind. They don't necessarily have always the same information, depending on what gets furnished to them. If it's furnished one way by, say, a credit card company or a mortgage company, whoever the credit is with, if it gets furnished one way to one company and another way to another company, the credit files won't match up. Now, that doesn't happen all that often, but it happens enough that it's a concern. Or depending on how well they keep that information and keep it accurate, it might deteriorate in one file and not in another. So trying to understand whether these three companies are keeping accurate reporting information on you is important. You do have a right to a free credit report from each of those three companies. That's a federal law. Congress created that right once a year, meaning that you can actually get it from all three companies once a year. And it's worth doing. It's worth all of us paying more attention to our credit report, which goes into our credit score. Now, you also noted that sometimes it's hard to read. I've read mine, and some of it is hard to read. You know, it's kind of almost like dots and dashes in terms of different credit card information or mortgage information and the like. And I think a standard format would be a good thing. One of the things that we've been doing is people often, they sort of hear about their credit report, but they really think they want is their credit score, which is something that a different company called FICO, the Fair Isaac Credit Organization, or whatever it is, Fair Isaac something, they take the credit reports and turn them into a credit score, which is what lenders use to decide whether to grant you credit, and if so, at what price, what rate. Consumers typically had to pay for the credit score. They were not guaranteed access to the credit score. They were only guaranteed access to the credit report, and again, that's, as you say, hard to decipher. Working with the credit card companies, we have been strongly encouraging them to share with their customers the actual credit score, because they get it every month to sort of assess you and your creditworthiness. And since they have it, they could share it with you, we believe. That's happening now, and tens of millions of Americans are starting to get their credit score for free on a regular basis, which is important because it can help you see whether your credit score is changing and cause you to then look into this and understand it better. But I would say that each of us has some responsibility to try to understand more about our credit report and credit score, and if we do that, we can protect ourselves and look out for ourselves, get mistakes fixed, get problems corrected. And they have an obligation to resolve those kind of disputes that you raise with them. So anyway, I would encourage people to go to our Ask CFPB and read about credit. You sound, you're more up on it than most people, definitely. But if people want to know more about credit reporting and credit scores, there's information on that segment of our website. And we are overseeing these companies now. We have examined, or essentially audit teams going in on a regular basis to see how they're keeping the information, and we are working on improved accuracy by these companies and improved responsiveness to the consumer, to us. It's our information, after all, that they have, that they've built these businesses around. So anyway, those are all things we're continuing to work on. Thank you.
Let's give Mr. Cordry a big hand, please. I'm going to do a couple of things after our meeting, but let's have a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? The meeting is adjourned. Now-